Yep.
Okay, we're on now. He said we're on now.
There's the door.
You called the meeting of the Morgantown Planning Commission to order. Does anyone want me to read the pre-meeting announcements? Didn't think so. First item on the agenda is the general public comments. Are there matters? General public comments for matters that are not on the agenda. Next item is meeting minutes from April 11th, 2024, which I didn't see in our packet.
My apologies, they're done, but they didn't make them into your packet, so we'll have to move those to the next meeting.
Okay. We'll move on to new business, RZ 24-03, Robert and Brendan Bennett, 440 Drummond Street.
Well, all right, well, I had, there it goes. All right. Thank you, Mr. President. So the above referenced property is currently home to a vacant two-story building. According to the applicant, the first floor could be used for a variety of uses. And the second floor was built to accommodate three dwelling units that share a common hall for ingress and egress. In 1994, 440 Drummond was registered with the city of Morgantown as a rental property. This use continued until 2007, when the previous owner informed the city that the rental renewal, through a rental renewal form, that the property, quote, "no longer had an apartment rented," and that the property had become owner occupied. While the property was acquired by the applicants with the intent to make the second floor rentable again, the property had sat vacant for more than a year and therefore lost its grandfather status, according to the city code. As such, the proposed use for the property defined below in your packet is not, was not permitted in the pro district, and therefore, the applicant is requesting a rezoning of the property. And here you can see, this is the zoning map showing the property. If you'll note where the star is, that's where 440 Drummond is located. And the property adjacent to it was the Friendship Manor, and that was recently approved by the city council for rezon. And now it has that new designation. The applicant is seeking a map amendment, again, to rezone 440 Drummond from a pro district to an R3 family, R3 multifamily residential district. Additionally, as I noted, the city council adopted an ordinance on January 17th, 2024, amending the adjoining parcel. And all those are in addendum B of your packet. In accordance with the 2023 comprehensive plan, and I apologize, addendum C was not in your packet, but it's on your dais now. If you look at that, and I'll click through the screens as well, it's kind of hard to see. But it's the area up basically to the left of WVU Medicine in that yellow circle is where the property is. And if you look at the character area map, it was clearly defined at the time as a commercial area. If you look at the growth framework map that was provided and adopted, you can see that, again, the area was identified for commercial use and redevelopment along specifically the corridor of Van Boris and Patterson and University avenues. What was a little bit, and I noted in the packet, is that on the future land use map itself, it appeared to show portions of the property. And that's the graphic that's on the left-hand side of the screen. It appeared to show part of the property, including 440 Drummond, as a low intensity residential. So when staff did the analysis, which included in your packet, looking at the three steps and tent location and character of the, of the subject property, it, I think it's clear that this is intended as part of the commercial corridor redevelopment of the, of the area. And if you look at, and I don't know if it's in here, the graphic on your right-hand side shows one of the iterations of the GIs, IAS mapping that was provided by the consultant after the plan was adopted. And again, the yellow shading area was identified as low intensity mixed use. And the area to the north of it was low intensity residential development. That would include my staff report.
Okay, anybody have any questions for the planner? Okay. Are you the applicant?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, is the applicant present?
We are. Hello, my name's Peter Giganbach. I'm here with Robert Bennett, who's the owner of the properties, here with his wife as well. And to tie into what Mr. Jaeger's recommendation is to the committee, I want to hand out some other photographs, if I may approach.
Watch your step.
Similar to what you've got, but it's a, I just spread these off minutes ago. This one to me, when I looked at everything that was in the packet, and you know, you look at the tax map, it's hard to tell what's going on. You look at the zoning map, it's hard to tell. But when you look at this shot, and you think to yourself, all right, if Mr. Jaeger is telling us that this is a commercial corridor, and you know that there's residents in the area, you have to ask, where do you draw the line? To me, the line's Drummond, because the red, whatever you call it, balloon shape, is the property that's the subject of the application. And of course, to the right there is what will be the future hospice, I hope. I don't know if city councils acted on that, has they?
They approved the rezoning.
They approved it. So that's the one we know that's, that's gone pro, and it makes sense. Because that section below Drummond runs along Van Boris and runs along University. These are difficult decisions. I get it. Mr. Demasters, you full well know from prior communications we've had, I was in your shoes at the county level for a very long time. And even before serving on the commission, served on the subcommittee that created the West Run zoning ordinance. It took a long time to put into place. And so we would sit, if you don't mind, Mr. Jaeger, go back to that big map with all the colors on it, not even that, there was one before. There was another one. It's the whole, it's the whole city.
It's loading.
This. So people, humans, when we put those colors in, we would do it. And it took us years to figure out, okay, this section over here is really kind of residential. This is more apartments. This is more commercial. It's a really hard job. But if a mistake is made, which happens, obviously, human error, or things change, as they have, then we have the process that we're here before, which is the map amendment. And Mr. Bennett, on his own, tried the text amendment, probably a little bit more to bite off, because you're changing it all across the board. But these map amendments, they're made specifically to fix issues. And if you look at the other shot, if you don't mind, Mr. Jaeger, going back to where we were closed in on, you can see the pro for Friendship Manor map a minute ago. Okay, so it's coming in amongst all kinds of different stuff, which proves how difficult it is to characterize, whether it's pro or R3, or business, or whatever the case may be. Now, to sum up real quickly, this pro district, I've done a little bit of research on it and looked around. I can't really find too many places that have anything like this. I mean, it's defined by your ordinance as allowing businesses and allowing residential as well. But in this instance, it's not. I mean, this building, it's got upstairs the ability to have one two-bedroom apartment and two one-bedroom apartments. They've all got different utility connects. They've all got different gas meters. And it's what it's made for. You know, when he lost, he didn't lose the grandfather status. That went away in '07. Mr. Bennett didn't get the property until '21 out of an estate. So it's not that he slept on his rights and didn't do what he was supposed to do to keep it. So this is a great opportunity to fix a problem with the grandfather issue, and to fix a problem with what shouldn't be prob, it should be R3, the way Friendship Manor was. That's all I have to add. Do you have anything else, Mr. Bennett?
No. I mean, I took care of the building for about 50 years. And as she grew older, she.
When you say she, who are we talking about?
Betty Lynch. She decided she didn't want to rent the units anymore. And she gave up her right to rent those. So I inherited the property and had to buy a fourth of it. So that's, it's designed to live in. I mean, I lived in it for a year. Jack Fek lived in it for 25 years. Gil Graham lived in it for 20 years.
Completely vacant now.
Been vacant for four years.
Because you can't use it for what it's intended. And if you fill it up with tenants, which you believe you'll be able to, you're going to be paying BNO tax on that too, aren't you?
Yeah, BNO and property tax gives up.
This is a good, this is a good thing. To make this change was going to help everybody. It's going to help the city. It's going to help the landowner. It's going to help that section. We'd asked it to accept the applicant's request, in keeping with staff recommendation. Please. Any questions for us?
That's what I was going to ask, any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone in opposition? You have to come up to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Constance, Constance Sutherley. My address is 1309 Mineral Avenue. But I am a member of the church that is right across the street in that area. And so I'd like to speak on behalf of that, that change. Because our church had at one point been interested in doing ministry out of that building. But the ministry we wanted to do would have included the upstairs, because we would have been wanting to do the kind of a, well, our church has what we call lifestyle centers. So it would be a perfect area to have a kind of a life, a small lifestyle center right there, where our conference, the West Virginia Conference, could send people to stay there. There's no closer one lifestyle center than Ripidaan, Virginia. And so that we would be allowed to do that if that zoning was correct. And I understand as a church, we would have been able to do that as well. But the, our church is a grassroots church, doesn't work from top down. And so it became clear to me that if I really wanted to continue with this idea of this particular mission, that I would have to buy the, purchase the building, or someone would have to buy it personally, and then run it out to the church. So I'm, I'm for the change of that, so that the building would be able to be, bring some, something into the area that would be a perfect thing to bring to that area if you're going to have a hospice right there. And it's just the perfect area, being close to the hospitals. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Cindy Chambers, and I've managed a house on Drummond Street for my mother since 2010. It's at 415 Drummond, and my son, Edward, just recently bought it within the last two or three weeks. My mother has deceased about a year ago, and so he bought the house. And we've always kind of thought that side of the street, the church, Dr. Hall is, was across the street. Wells Fargo was across the street. Now it's a business building. And then we have Smith Rental has their building there. We kind of feel like, well, you know, should our property be the same as the other property, even though it's a house right now? So, so in some respects, you know, it, it looks interesting that, you know, it becomes more commercial. I don't fully understand what R3 is as compared to the pro. I know the pro is business. It could be any number of businesses along there. Is R3, three apartments, four apartments, 10 apart, how many?
Three or more apartments.
How many?
Dwelling units.
So they, so somebody could tear that building down and build a 20-unit apartment building there, or something?
If, I mean, it would depend on the, obviously, the amount of area and land you had to work with and all the other zoning requirements that go with the project.
But if they, if we've zoned R3 or pro, they could.
The threshold for R3 is three dwelling units or more. In the pro district, that is not permitted. In the pro district, it's either townhomes, or two-family dwellings, or duplexes.
Duplexes, okay. So R3 would be, so I'm kind of mixed on not knowing which is R3. But you would have to, you would have to be, we had three buildings, three buildings on five lots, you know? So we subdivided things to have one building per one lot, make it right. And then when we sold them, it was one building per one lot. And we always had to have at least two parking spaces per apartment. So for each duplex, we had to have four off-street parking spaces, you know, if we did that. So would that be the requirement, two parking, one parking space per apartment, or how?
So it's currently one parking space per dwelling unit of one bedroom.
Okay.
And then any additional bedroom in the dwelling unit changes to .75.
Point seven five.
And that's how the calculation is done.
And so the request here is for R3.
Correct.
And so everything, if someone were to put in a larger building at some point in time in the future, they would have to meet all these other requirements.
Parking standards, yes.
Yes, everything. And if it goes to the pro, or I don't know what, it's kind of like you're talking about two different things now. I don't know.
It's currently zoned pro.
It's currently zoned pro. That's what we thought.
The applicant's requesting that it be zoned to R3.
R3, okay. So it looks pretty small to be adding all those parking spaces. I, I don't see it in my mind how you would do that. And so an R3 would be fine. I, what do you think, Edward? R3? If it's the existing building, if it's another building, then that's a whole nother issue. But they would have to adhere to all of the parking standards, is what you're saying?
Correct.
For the building. And that would, might be limited as to the parking for that building if it were to become a.
Yes, if there was new construction up on the, yeah, there would have to.
Is, is there room for the parking spaces now for the three uni, or?
I haven't done that analysis. That would be the next step, if there's a project to, to get departments back up and running again.
Okay, so that would be that. All right. Well, those are my concerns, but.
And that's, that's the key. There's no active site plan or anything involved. This is just the case to.
Okay, just the case for rezoning.
And one of the things you have to remember, if it is R3 and they decide to tear down the building and put something else in there, there are setback requirements.
Right.
That the building would have to fit within the footprint, have all the parking spaces, so realistically, they're, they're limited to the size of the building.
Right, okay. That's what we thought. Okay. So I guess I'm not so unopposed to anything, but you know, in my mind, and it always has been, and you know, we're keeping it in the family, is that the property across the street, we're looking, you know, and, and she's looking probably at that too. With the church there, there's only one other house, and then one on the corner of Coontz. I think that's what people were looking at too. So anyway, just, do you have anything else?
I don't think you covered it. Just clarifying the questions that we had.
Yeah.
The size of the building and the size of the property.
Yeah, and just the parking spaces. So, okay, thank you.
So any other member of the audience who wants to speak, either in favor or against? Okay, staff recommendations, please.
Zoning map amendment requests should be evaluated on their land use merit alone. Development intentions are extraneous, and the commission should consider the request on its merits as a land use decision. In conducting such an analysis, the commission should determine if the R3 in its multifamily residential district is appropriate zoning classification for the premises, weighing all possible future development and land use scenarios as permitted in the planning and zoning code. After review, staff finds the proposed zoning map amendment to be consistent with the city's 2023 comprehensive plan update with respect to the goals set forth in the land management plan, which was mentioned in your packet, as well as the character area, growth framework maps, and the future land use map. Furthermore, staff recommends approval of the zoning map amendment as requested by the app.
Okay, any discussion?
You know, as we kind of think back to Friendship Manor, I think that decision was made, to my recollection, based on two factors. One, pro didn't fit what they were. One, Pro didn't fit what they were trying to do there and R3 did, even though they were taking it from Pro to R3, which is kind of a downgrade thing. But the other issue was it did not open up to the neighborhood.
Right.
This does, obviously. And although, to me, it's not such an issue with the multifamily apartment building, but if you look at the possibilities of things that go into a R3 district, one of which is a dormitory, the other which is a fraternity or sorority house. So we're talking about putting that right across with access through an urban neighborhood. And that, I have difficulty with that. Now, I, I thought we had talked about creating a new zoning district, something other than Pro.
We have.
Where are we with that?
With our, with our limited staffing, we haven't been able to move on that like we wanted to. But we still intend to.
But my, my recollection is some of those discussions would allow something like this to happen in that new district.
Yes, I would think so, absolutely.
And, and again, a refreshment of my memory of this is the Pro district is kind of a buffer to a residential neighborhood, right?
I think that was the, that was the intent, yes.
I mean, same as in Evansdale, going up and down University Avenue. There's that Pro district that goes between the Evansdale neighborhood and University Avenue. I don't know where the other Pros are, but those two are good examples I can think of.
Yeah, we can, it's up on the screen. You can kind of see where it is.
Well, I know where that one is, but the other ones around the city. There's one in Evansdale. I don't know where else.
Burrows and Collins Ferry, across the, were, across University there, across, yeah.
Yeah, so to me, this was a, a short-term fix, which they understood that it could get rezoned down the road here once that new district is opened up. So, I mean, that's at least my impression of this. I, I, you know, I could see everything else on here, but those two things concern me for the neighborhood in general.
And I hear what you're saying, and I understand it, but as I'm looking at it, there's, if that building were to come down, I mean, whatever, three apartments in it right now?
Three, four? On the second floor?
Yeah. If that building were to come down, realistically, I don't think anything even that size footprint can go back in there with the parking. So while I know that can be an issue, you get a fraternity, et cetera, et cetera, you can't do it on that lot. You can't do it on this specific lot. The only thing they could do is, is purchase everything around there, get the size of building, but in that case, that'd have to come in front of us too. Probably as a, as a redevelopment type issue. And I don't think anything's getting sold there. And I think, I also have an issue in that they were here how long ago? And we said, yeah, we're gonna look at a new, a, a new zoning district. And it's been this long and we haven't, and they're still sitting there with a vacant building because they've been waiting on us.
It's not us.
Not us, but, but, but that, that's another issue I have too. Any other comments? If there's no other comments, sure.
Move to approve?
Second.
Let me amend my motion. Move to forward to City Council the recommendation that the zoning map amendment be affected.
No motion? Have a second? All in favor? Opposed? Next item is TXT twenty-four dash zero-one, administrative smoke shop tobacco store.
Thank you, Council. Good luck, sir.
So the staff report and the ordinance that's proposed would create a new zoning, land use classification planning and zoning code called a smoke shop tobacco store. And it would be defined as any premise that engages in the display, sale, distribution, delivery, offering, furnishing, or marketing of electronic smoking devices, electronic smoking liquid, tobacco, tobacco products, or tobacco paraphernalia, provided, however, that any grocery store, supermarket, convenience store, drugstore, or similar retail use that only sells conventional cigars, cigarettes, or tobacco as an ancillary sale shall not be defined as a smoke shop and tobacco store. And this obviously came about as staff does not have anything to differentiate these type of establishments engaged, engaged in this type of business from a re, a regular retail sales establishment store. So in, in creating this new land use classification, table thirteen thirty-one would also have to be amended. And the proposal is to allow these establishments by conditional use in the B2 and by right in the B5. One other additional, and just to show you that, again, that it's not being zoned out of the city, of course, is where our commercial and residence, our commercial corridors are. And again, that's along our major thoroughfares. So there is still visibility and access to property to, to establish such uses. And then the other supplemental regulation would also kind of govern how close and proximity these establishments could be to one another. And you can see it in your packet and on the screen. And that will conclude the staff's report. One, one other note is that the council did review this at a committee of the whole and referred it to the planning commission for, for review. And then also in January, the planning commission had a workshop briefly on the matter, and no questions or comments were raised at the time.
Okay.
Just make a suggestion, just, it's my pharmacy background that gets to this. On, on the top of page thirty-six, on the first sentence--
Page thirty-six?
At the top of page thirty-six, first sentence, it refers to or other controlled substances. So can we say like regulated substances or something? Because controlled substances in medical terminology has, and the FDA has a whole different definition.
That to me fills in all the schedules.
Now that you pointed out controlled substances, I kept reading. Herein looked like heroin all of a sudden. I was like, what, wait a minute, what?
Yeah, there you go. Including, but now--
It could be Valium.
So change, change controlled to regulated seems to be a very appropriate edit.
Yeah, okay.
I understand I'm the new kid on the block here, but was there brief history of the discussion back in January about was this particular ordinance or anything close to this presented at that time? Or is it just generally how we could regulate this type of use?
The framework was there, presented in the January meeting, yes.
And, and if I remember right, there was some language we played around with too. Just a little bit, not much.
This would be the first, well, a little bit, but--
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is, is this distribution patterns, zoning patterns similar to like liquor stores? Or how, how, I was just wondering.
Uh, I would have to go back and look. I would, I don't know if in the B1 they're necessarily permitted, but it's in keeping with, you know, larger, you know, strip centers and larger major travel areas as opposed to, say, the downtown, which is not included in this in the B4 district or a neighborhood business district.
So this is a, an amendment that requires us to review and find it consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Yes, sir.
And therefore recommend it for enactment?
Correct, sir.
That would be my motion, Mr. Chairman, if you care to hear one.
I'd love to hear one.
Well, that's it.
Okay. Do I, do I have a second?
Again, the motion is that we, we find this consistent with the comprehensive plan and we forward it to council with a recommendation for enactment.
Do we need to be more specific other than, I mean, just citing? Because to me, it doesn't really, the, the comprehensive plan doesn't really address this type of use other than vaguely of kind of revitalizing or how, how to protect and just the general welfare.
Good enough for me.
Sure, that's fair.
Certainly welcome to amend my motion if you want to, but--
Well, I'm just, yeah, just for discussion purposes, just as to be an advising body to the city council if, you know, other than just stating we find that it, how do we best advise them or provide?
Well, our statutory role is, is to advise them as to whether we think this is consistent or inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And if we find it inconsistent, we could still recommend it with other facts. So that, that's our job. And I do think it's consistent with the, with the comprehensive plan for the reasons the planners discussed. But I'm happy to amend the motion if you think it's not appropriate or detailed enough.
That wasn't my, you know, discussion or, I just meant before it went to a second reading that, again, being the new kid on the block, just making sure that that was kind of the, I'm not questioning our advisory capacity or that it doesn't meet statutory muster, just kind of for my own kind of edification. If there's anything else to discuss, that we educate ourselves possibly of what the comprehensive plan, how exactly it does.
Well, let's hear, let's hear from the expert. Tell us why we feel this, why you recommend this to be consistent with the comp--
Actually, in the ordinance on that, I believe it's the sixth whereas clause, kind of gives the purpose for enacting the legislation. And then to your point, Mr. Stranko, saying that it's, it's not inconsistent with the plan. And even though, to your point, it doesn't specifically address any type of these zoning tax amendments, it's generally also, the plan's also saying we want to revitalize, as you mentioned, our downtown and other areas and creating diverse opportunities for different types of business opportunities. And as we've seen, there's been a proliferation of some certain types of businesses and locations. And, you know, this would deal with that issue as well.
That's, that's a fair statement. I, I appreciate the, the edification, just the, more so that to provide city council with more so than just a blanket statement that it meets the plan. So thank you.
Just said it for, I guess, more educational. In the past, when we've gotten these things, we have not liked the ordinance that's put in front of us. And we have said, well, we want this out, we want this in, we want to change this wording. So we do do that as part of these, we just haven't done with this.
Sure, I understand.
And actually, this is an unusual circumstance, and this is coming to us from city council. So they're the governing body.
Sure.
Yeah.
When we did firearms sales adding to the land, we cited, you know, health and safety. And that's listed in the, in the code here, like whereas the zoning ordinance is designed to promote general public welfare, health, and safety. I think that this fits in with that. I know earlier today in another West Virginia municipality, a string of smoke shops and vape shops was raided by police for illegal substances and selling to minors, so--
Control.
Control substances. Not saying that any of that is happening here, but I don't think anyone would question the general health and safety coming from some of these.
This is an excellent and reactive initiative, counsel, for a problem that we're suffering. So I'm all for it. I think it's a great, a great thing.
I was handing out paperwork to downtown businesses last Friday, and I went into more vape shops than I can count on one hand, just on High Street.
Must be a reason there, there, right?
Well, it certainly doesn't have the public controversy that the location of gun stores has, but it's every bit, in fact, it's demonstrably more of a public health threat than the firearm sales. So I'll call the question, Mr. President. A motion and a second on the floor?
We have a motion, you second, Phil, right? We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, committee reports. Okay, staff comments?
Just a few updates, again, with the resignation. Mr. Blaster was informed that we need to appoint, the planning commission needs to appoint a ex officio member to the traffic commission. So looking for volunteers to serve in that capacity. Mr. Williams already serves on the traffic commission, I know.
We already have one, can't he just put on extra?
I believe, because he's, he's been, he's representing a specific ward and not necessarily the planning commission, they're asking for another representative, so.
That'd be a good thing for a new guy, maybe, to learn a little bit more about city business.
Is the traffic commission actively meeting? I mean, there's already a council rep. I shouldn't do it either. What do you do with all your time?
I hope you don't look at me.
I'm not sure what the point of it is, really. I mean, I'm not protesting. Whoever decided we need a rep on the traffic commission, I'd like to understand why that is. What, what value do we add? We have a conduit of communication that that staff, if there's something that, I know you don't host the traffic commission--
We do not, that's fair.
But you and he talk all the time.
Right.
So--
It's been this way for quite a while.
What value are we adding here, the volunteer members?
I mean, I agree to your point, it's just that, that there's the vacancy and they've asked that a member be appointed.
I, I'd suggest we'll just leave it vacant until we can figure out why we need to be there.
Okay.
I like that.
I will duly note it and I will report back.
We have nobody interested in serving.
I think we go with A.
Go with A.
I think we can look back at the minutes and, and show that we've never really even dealt with an issue.
No, it's everyone--
It's needed. I am happy to step in until the planning commission is full and one of our new members would volunteer.
Volunteer.
I don't want to just be like, we don't care enough to show up.
The second Wednesday of the month?
Yes.
It's not that we don't care, councilors, it's that we don't understand what we're doing there.
We've been there for a long time. It's just been Mr. Blaster.
Yeah, but I guess the, the reason is, because we've always done that isn't really a reason, is it?
Well, just saying it's not something new that they're asking for.
Has the traffic commission provided like comments on large site plans or in the past for, in your recent memo, okay?
Not since I've been here. I mean, that's been a while.
And maybe, and I don't mean to bulldoze the issue, because maybe it's a good idea that we are closer to the traffic commission. I don't know that. That's something that we need to figure out. And if we, if we're gonna take volunteer time to spend with the traffic commission, we need to know why we're doing it.
Second Wednesday, I have ballpark, so, sorry.
You need another meeting, Danielle.
Yeah, I was gonna say, technically, we have representation on, as a planning commission, like I'm serving both that role, so it's not like it's--
Right.
We have--
Oh, you're on the traffic--
Yes.
He's my fifth ward representative for everything now. Everything I stepped away from, he stepped into.
Yeah, so we have, the planning commission is technically represented, just not as, I guess, or have, you want to say, technically it's not because it's not an ex officio member.
Is it that we have a voting member on the board or is it just for communication? If it's just for communication, it doesn't matter if he's in the fourth ward or whatever, so.
But, but the issue remains, and you're a perfect venue to, to just think through this. And do we need to put one of our members on there? Happy to do it if we understand why. That's all I'm saying.
Did he say he's happy to volunteer if we--
No, no.
And I will, yeah.
Happy to volunteer somebody else.
I think it's true that way, but we won't, because I'm sitting close to me a little. Okay.
Not on camera, he wouldn't.
Oh, he probably would, yeah. I guess that's it, right? One thing, the, the, the space looks great. Why don't you get us those screens here?
It's kind of hard.
The Blaster recognition, are we--
Yes, we're moving forward with that. Yes, we'll set up a time hopefully with council and get Mr. Blaster to be able to attend that.
Nice, give him something to hang on the wall, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you'll let us know when, right?
Yes, absolutely.
The president needs to be there.
Yeah, so that I can be in town?
Yes.
For once? Okay, anything else for the good of the commission?
Move to adjourn?
Okay, let's go. One other thing, no, we're not adjourned.
Well, yeah, I mean--
We are adjourned? We're adjourned. But he's talking, so.
I will.